Are we on? Okay, say welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and we'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, and will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then after that will be led in prayer by a special young man who is a wee below, a member of Troop 398, Mr. Aaron Bruner. And then, also, we'd like to recognize that we have with us several other troop members from Troop 1108 St. Paul's, and they're here to work on their citizenship merit badge. So Commissioner Turner and then Mr. Bruner, please.
Aaron, would you like to come up here, too? He might be. You just stand next to me. Will you bow your heads and pray with me, please? Father, it is good to be here tonight, Lord, and we do come to you with a somber and sad heart, Father, for the students in Florida who have lost their lives to a tragedy. And as challenging it is at times, we still offer up prayers for those families who are suffering unimaginable pain, and we've got a pox on our country tonight, Lord, where there's so much hate going around that can only be filled by the love of Christ. And I just ask that you hold our nation close to you, that you allow us to understand each other a little bit better, and that we recognize that each one of us has an individual responsibility to carry out your love and embrace those as you see them through your eyes. I ask that you be with us tonight as we conduct the county's business, allow us to do so honorably and admirably where our citizens are proud of the way that we conduct ourselves, and be with those who are watching us tonight at home. Thank you for the privilege that you've given each one of us to be born in the United States of America and to live in Rutherford County. I ask all these things in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kooch.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sereno. We have a quorum, twenty present.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
And a second from Commissioner Nipper. Anyone have any corrections or additions they'd like to make? If not, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a resolution of sympathy on behalf of a wonderful lady named Doris Jones. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to invite up Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Allen, too. Doris Jones was an amazing person, and she was involved with the county election commission for many years, and she and her husband were very supportive of nonprofit causes and charitable causes in Smyrna, and they were just great and wonderful people, so it's sad to hear of her passing, and we wanted to honor her tonight with a resolution. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Doris Jones, a member of the Rutherford County Election Commission from March 1997 to February 2011, and a friend of many. And whereas she is survived by her husband Clyde Wilford Jones Jr., to whom she was married for fifty-three years, and their children Terry and wife Linda, Patrice and Chris. And whereas Doris was an active member of Trinity Christian Church and Eastern Star. And whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this fifteenth day of February 2018, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Doris Jones. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Doris Jones by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Second for Ms. Allen and Mr. Turner and others. All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that. We don't have anyone that's requested to make public comments tonight, so now Commissioner Turner, we're ready for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you'll find on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to approve this evening. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
All right, and a second Commissioner Phillips and Mr. Sereno. Does anyone have anyone that needs to be added to that list? If not, then we're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Steering will like to also fill the vacancy on the conservation board. Steering nominates Mr. Clarence Brandon. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
And second from Mr. McAdoo. Any further discussion or any other nominations? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Turner. Next on our agenda is the resolution to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've also reviewed that consent agenda. I find all those items appropriate to be placed on that agenda, and I move that the consent be adopted as presented.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any further discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, then, please record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item J on the agenda, there we do not have any public hearings regarding zoning changes tonight. We're ready to begin reports by our standing committees. Commissioner Jordan on budget financing investment.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a good Valentine's Day yesterday. Item K1A, we've got a general fund budget amendment. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. County buildings OIT, decrease unassigned fund balance $110,000. Increase expenditures building improvements $47,500. Data processing services $38,000. Data processing equipment $24,000. This is for structural modifications, phone and computer lines for the new drug court building we've just bought. Resolved this fifteenth day of February 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Allen and some others, I believe. Any discussion or questions regarding this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Item K1C, we've got a highway fund budget amendment. No, K1B. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows. Highway, decrease assigned for highways $90,000. Increase expenditures $50,000 for crushed stones and $40,000 for highway equipment. That's for crushed stone, and to buy a truck that's supposedly laid down on them, I believe was the terminology I was told. Resolved this fifteenth day of February 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Johnson and others there. Any discussion? If not, then please cast your votes. Mr. Schaefer, have you voted? Good.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Item K1C, resolution from the Health and Educational Facilities Board. Whereas on October 25th, 2017, the Health and Education Facilities Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee adopted a preliminary resolution with respect to a plan of financing through the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds by the Board to finance the cost of a) the acquisition, rehabilitation, and expansion of an existing approximately 176-unit multifamily housing facility known as Spring Valley Apartments, located at 1400 Manor Drive, Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, Tennessee; and b) paying a portion of the cost of issuance of the bonds, the principal amount not to exceed $14 million. Whereas the Board acts on behalf of the county of Rutherford, and whereas the project will be owned and operated by Alco Spring Valley Partners, LP, a Tennessee limited partnership. And whereas this approval is intended to constitute the approval required by Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. And whereas a public hearing open to the public was held February 8th, 2018, for which due and reasonable public notice was given in accordance with the provisions of law and the procedures established therefore. Therefore it be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the issuance of the bonds by the Board is hereby approved for the purpose of Section 147S of the Code, resolved this fifteenth day of February 2018. And if I'm not mistaken, our county attorney, Mr. Bolden, can correct me if I'm wrong, the county has absolutely no liability in this, it's just a conduit for the money to flow through. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. McAdoo, second, and Mr. Schaefer and others. Any further discussion or questions? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, record the votes, please.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Item K1D, resolution from the Industrial Development Board. Whereas in November 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance costs of the battery manufacturing plant of Far Nissan North America Incorporated. And whereas the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, in its meeting January 31st, 2018, approved a resolution to partially redeem the outstanding bonds with respect to certain equipment located in the battery manufacturing plant, to approve the NNA request to convey the equipment to NNA with the purpose of the conveyance of the equipment to permit NNA to sell the equipment to AESC US LLC, who will operate the battery manufacturing plant independent of NNA. And whereas the resolution also authorized the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of acquisition by AESC LLC of the equipment conveyed to AESC LLC. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents and matters for the partially redemption of NNA of outstanding bonds for equipment located in the battery manufacturing plant and the issuance of industrial revenue bonds by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of financing the cost of equipment located in the battery manufacturing plant acquired by AESC LLC, in accordance with the resolution of the Industrial Development Board, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1. And incorporated herein as is set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this fifteenth day of February 2018. And if anybody has any questions about that, Mr. Bolden's in the audience, he'll be glad to come and answer any questions, because that's all the acronyms I know. Resolve the fifteenth day of February. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Dodd and others from Smyrna down there. Any questions? Discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Last item is presentation of debt service fund cash flow and debt management policy for three-star program. This is for presentation only, it goes into great detail about our debt management policy and cash flow forecast and all that good stuff, and it's on your iPad and available for any late-night reading of your heart's desire. No action is needed on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. All right. We don't have a report tonight from the Health and Education Committee, or the Property Management Committee, or Public Safety, or Public Works, so we're moving right along here. Next on the agenda is Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, and Commissioner Gooch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fellow Commissioner, Steering has four requests for your consideration this evening. The first is a resolution concerning our purchasing private act. Whereas Mr. Chairman, Private Chapter 17, House Bill Number 1441, was adopted by the 110th General Assembly to create and adopt the Rutherford County Purchasing Act of 2017. And whereas the Rutherford County Commission ratified and adopted the 2017 Purchasing Act on November 12th, 2017. And where it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that the 2017 Purchasing Act be further amended to increase the threshold over which public advertisement and sealed competitive bids or proposals are required to an amount not to exceed $25,000 for non-emergency, non-proprietary purchases as permitted by Tennessee Code Annotated 12212. And to clarify that the 2017 Purchasing Act does not govern purchases by the local Board of Education or local education agencies. And where it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that the Rutherford County Commission adopt the attached amendment to the 2017 Purchasing Act as attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein fully by the reference. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that it respectively request the Tennessee General Assembly to enact the 2017 Purchasing Act amendments attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein fully by this reference. Be it further resolved that upon passage by the Tennessee General Assembly that the said 2017 Purchasing Act amendments shall be presented to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners for ratification. Be it further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a certified copy of this action to the legislative delegation representing Rutherford County, Tennessee, with this request for passage by the Tennessee General Assembly at its next legislative session. Approved and adopted by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on the fifteenth day of February 2018, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
And we, second Commissioner Phillips and Turner and et cetera. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second is a resolution to our legislative delegation to support the inclusion of Rutherford County in the Tennessee Local Educational Capital Investment Act. Whereas Mr. Chair, a proposed act to amend Tennessee Code Annotated Title 67, Chapter 6, relative to local education capital investments, to allow counties to keep 2% of state sales tax that can be used for school debt service or school capital expenses, has been filed and it would be beneficial for Rutherford County to be included in the Tennessee Local Education Capital Investment Act. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County State delegation be asked to support inclusion of Rutherford County in the Tennessee Local Education Capital Investment Act. Be it further resolved, the county clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation, resolved this the fifteenth day of February 2018. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Allen, a second there. Any discussion? Questions? All right, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation and resolution regarding our legal services agreement. Whereas at a regularly scheduled steering committee meeting on February 5th, 2018, the steering committee voted to recommend a one-year extension on the county attorney and the general legal services portion of the legal services agreement, and a four-year extension on the litigation and extra services of the legal services agreement to include clarification that the county attorney is an independent contractor with certain specified compensation and benefits. And whereas the attached Fourth Amendment to legal services agreement between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Hudson Reed and McCrery, PLLC, for the continuation of legal services for Rutherford County, Tennessee, and for Josh A. McCrery to serve as county attorney as permitted by the private act, a copy of said Fourth Amendment to legal services agreement being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, is incorporated herein at length as is set forth herein verbatim. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for Rutherford County to enter into the said Fourth Amendment to legal services agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Fourth Amendment to legal services agreement shall be and hereby is adopted and approved. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be, and they hereby are authorized to execute the Fourth Amendment to the legal services agreement and any and all other documents required or necessary to factuate the terms of the agreement as set forth herein on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and this will be resolved the fifteenth day of February 2018. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And second from a whole group of people, Mr. P. and Dodd and et cetera, others. All right, so I believe that at this discussion with the steering committee that Mr. McCrory said he would sort of review the same comments that was made at the steering, so all of you will be equally informed about what is taking place here. So with your permission, we'll let Mr. McCrory make his comments, and then we'll continue on a little bit after that. Mr. Gooch.
All right. Okay. Make sure this is on. We had a pretty lengthy conversation at the steering committee meeting last week, and toward the conclusion of that meeting, I was asked to share much of that information with you, and so I'll try to do that, maybe in a slightly condensed version. But the discussion I had with them last week was based largely on the letter that I sent to all of you dated January 10, 2018. And I went through various points of that letter with them, which I will do now. I told them, part of my purpose in sending the letter in January was that I, it began to dawn on me, perhaps it should have earlier or sooner, that there was a lot of conversation about this legal services agreement, but the conversations were being had in different places with different people. And so I was at steering committee, and I was here, but not everybody's on steering committee, and everything that was said in steering committee may or may not be said in front of the full commission, and so it begins to become apparent that sometimes it's good just to say everything in one place at one time, and this is probably that place. So as I set out in my letter, going backwards for a minute, I think it's worth understanding how we got where we are, and so I'm going to address that just for a moment, realizing that most of you probably understand this. But prior to 2010, the county attorney served with no written agreement. It was on a two-year term, and every two years, those of you who were here prior to 2010, the county attorney was just re-elected, and that's the way it worked. Somewhere along, around 2009, I believe, the RNA, Ms. Allen's here, I see her, began suggesting that maybe there should be an in-house legal department as early as 2009. I think they started that conversation. And one of the things that came out early in that conversation was that perhaps there should be a written agreement for legal services. And so there was a private act that was passed by the state legislature in 2010 that you then adopted, which was attached to what I sent to you. It was pretty simple, the private act. It basically said Rutherford County is free, I'm paraphrasing, is free to enter into written contracts with private lawyers to provide legal services and to get a county attorney. And so beginning in 2010, there was a written agreement put together, and that was entered at that time. That agreement, then and now, has two primary components to it. The first component, I use the word buckets a lot, there's two buckets. Bucket one is the county attorney and general legal services. And bucket two is litigation. In 2010, the county wanted all legal services billed at an hourly rate, and so that's how it worked, beginning in 2010. The basic legal services and the litigation were all billed at an agreed hourly rate of $150 an hour. That's how it started. Those two buckets had different terms, and by term I mean length, the length of those portions of the agreement. The county attorney general legal services portion in 2010 had a two-year term, the litigation had a four-year term. So they were staggered. When we got to 2012, there was, again, quite a bit of discussion about the legal services agreement, and there were a couple of changes made. The primary change that was made at that point was that the county attorney and general legal services portion was modified from an hourly rate to a flat fee. That happened in 2012. It's been on a flat fee arrangement ever since, to this point. It's a flat fee. It is based on a county attorney budget, if you will, that goes through the budget committee every year and is approved, and then you approve it every year. And that's how the flat portion is determined. Inside that is various components, including a back tax person and some things like that that are all inside that flat fee component. That started in 2012 and has continued to this point. The litigation portion was on an hourly rate then and continued. So it was renewed for two years at that point, and so we got to 2014. When we got to 2014, both pieces were up for renewal. So there was a change again, and the primary change at that point was that the county attorney general services portion was changed to four years. So now they were tracking on four years and would expire June 30, 2018, of this year, June 30 of this year. The general county attorney portion did not have a renewal clause, it did not have a termination clause. It just ends. It ends on June 30th, unless something's done. The litigation piece has, since the beginning, had a clause that says that if the county doesn't terminate that piece within 180 days of the renewal date, then it auto-renews. That's what the litigation piece said. And that persisted since 2010 through all the various iterations. In September of last year, September 22 of 2017, I sent a letter to you saying that, I think in pretty clear language, how these agreements would renew or terminate. And so that, I guess, started the discussion at this point. As a result of that, I wound up at a steering committee meeting in November of 2017 where the agreement was discussed in terms of the renewal for the first time in this cycle. And the steering committee voted for a few changes, but the most, I guess, notable one was was the term, which was to extend both pieces for four years, really four and a half years to get it on a calendar year. And there was various reasons for that that the steering committee had at the time that were discussed at the meeting in some detail. And that's what came out of that meeting in November of two thousand and seventeen. Following that meeting and before the December two thousand and seventeen meeting, I, you know, there were various folks at the meeting asking questions about the agreement and how does this work and so forth, and I then reached out to C-TAS. All of you have seen that email exchange that I've shared with all of you. So the purpose in doing that was, we were going through this process, and my objective was to try to make this amendment as correct, accurate, transparent as could possibly be. And so I contacted C-TAS, I spoke with Ms. McCroskey, we exchanged some emails, and I shared that with you. Ms. McCroskey is, I guess she is today, she was at the time, the manager of legal services there. She has been involved with the County Attorney Association for a long time, so she's a person who knows how this works in the state of Tennessee. And so I asked her several questions, but three primary questions. The main ones being, number one, folks were raising the question, is this how this is done? Is it, do you do this by private agreement? And so my first question to her was, how do most counties do it? Is this unusual or unique to have a private agreement with a private lawyer? And she responded in there, as you saw, no, most counties have private agreements with private lawyers. The unique thing is to have an in-house counsel. That's the unique thing. There aren't very many counties that have those as compared to the number of counties in Tennessee. So there's nothing unusual about hiring an outside lawyer to serve as county attorney or provide legal services, at least according to C-TAS, who all of you rely on with some regularity. I also asked her specifically about our two thousand and ten private act. I asked her to look at it and tell me, do you think that us doing a contract at this point is in line and conforms with the two thousand and ten private act? And she did that, and she responds, as you've seen in the email, yes. And it does. The private act's pretty straightforward and is a pretty broad grant of authority for contracting. And then last, I asked her about who would prepare the agreement. Now, that seems like a strange question to me, but it was an issue that was raised where someone suggested that me or my office shouldn't prepare the document because we're one of the parties to the document. Well, I get that, except that I don't know who else would prepare it. So I thought, well, maybe that's a real thing, so I'll check on that, too. And I asked her that, and of course, she said, no, most of the time, the county attorney would prepare that document. But when I got to the December, and I may have my chronology off, but I asked the steering committee specifically whether they wanted someone else to prepare this document and advise them, you can hire another lawyer if you want to to prepare this document, and they voted to have me prepare it. So that's why I prepared the document with that background. When I got back to the steering committee in December, by that time, we had done a draft of the Fourth Amendment, and the steering committee was reviewing that draft, and it contained, I think, the changes that they had requested as best we could, as best I could put them into writing. So at that point, they reviewed the document itself, some folks were there to talk, RNA was there, Ron Williams was there, there was discussion, quite a bit of it. One of the things that was raised at that point was, what are you? What are you as the county attorney? And by that, I mean, are you an employee? Are you an official? Are you an independent contractor? What are you? And I advised that my understanding of it was that I am a contracted party, just like if one of you hired a private lawyer, you would enter a contract with a private lawyer. They're not your employee, and they're certainly not your official. They're just somebody you've hired by contract. In a similar way, the private act authorized the county to enter private contracts with private lawyers, and in my view, that's what we are. Having said that, I again asked C-TAS that question, because I thought, if that's a real question, I would rather confront the question. And at the steering committee, I told the steering committee, I think we need to address this head-on, because I don't want lingering questions about whether or not I'm an employee or an official or whatever. We need to just fix it if people are interested in that. So I checked with C-TAS again. C-TAS told me, no, you don't have to call it anything in particular, as long as the contract is clear on what services you are providing and what the compensation arrangement is. In my view, the contract version that came to you in December was clear. So when the question came up at the December meeting about, well, do we need, and I'm talking now, the December County Commission meeting, I didn't see any need to modify the document as it was presented, because I'd already investigated that issue and determined that, in my opinion, it was fine the way it was, because it was clear, and it was written, and it was a clear written contract. And that was the only requirement, as I understood it, from C-TAS and frankly, my own opinion of it at that time. So we got to the December fourteen meeting, and what came out of steering was to extend both pieces for four years, both buckets. When we got here in December, and there was discussion, and ultimately, the motion that passed, as you all know, was to extend both for two years. Well, that was a position neither I nor anyone at my office had considered, because it was not something that was discussed specifically at the steering committee, and it was not something that had been brought to us in the interim, and so I didn't have a response to that suggestion, other than, you're free to vote on that, and then let me think about that. So that's what happened. Now, in the, let me kind of digress for just a moment. I said I'd be brief, and I'm not doing a very good job, and I thank you for your indulgence. But I think there has been, on occasion, since I've been doing this for a year and a half, or however long it's been, a year and three months, an effort on my part to try to make sure that you all know what we're doing, so that there's no uncertainty about what does it even mean, what legal services are there? What are you doing? So I put some of that in my letter to you. It's not everything, but it gives you an idea of the kinds of things that go on. So on the general legal services side, that consists largely of attendance at meetings, and in that year, we attended more than fifty meetings. We write legal opinions on behalf of various directors and others that request opinions on various things. In that year, basically, two thousand and seventeen, I could identify at least twenty-eight clear legal opinions. That's a lot of work, folks. Twenty-eight legal opinions is a lot of legal opinions over the course of a year. We get questions almost daily, probably daily, but I don't want to overstate it, almost daily, definitely multiple times a week, from some various county directors that want legal advice. And that's our job. That's what we do under the county general portion. We draw the resolutions, some of them at least that you see, others we review, and sometimes we do other things. Sometimes there are investments of time based on unique circumstances. I used in the letter the recent March that was an unusual event, but it required a large amount of time to figure that out, and a lot of coordination with various departments, including Berfriesboro and so forth. Those are the kinds of things we do under county general. It is an ongoing, and it's a big job. It's a big job. On the litigation side, it's probably more self-explanatory, but because some of you don't always know exactly what's going on, unless you call me and ask, about close to a year ago, I think probably March of last year or so, at a steering committee meeting, Commissioner P. had a great suggestion, which was, is there some way you can start creating a litigation list and submitting it to the steering committee so we know what's going on? And I said, yes, sure, we can absolutely do that. That's a good idea. I can't put attorney-client privileged stuff in there, but I can give you names of cases so you know what's going on, you know how many there are, and I can do a blurb that tells you what it is. And so since that time, we've done that every single month. That litigation list is created, it's sent to Vicki, Vicki puts it on SharePoint, I think it's a public document. The steering committee looks at it every single month, and it's on their iPad, and they look at it, and they're aware of what is going on with the litigations. The trend in the litigation, which the steering committee will tell you, has been to reducing it. So there are always, Rutherford County is a big county, there are a lot of employees, and there's a lot going on. There are always quite a few litigations going on. I project there always will be, when you have a county of this size. It is probable there will be cases, multiple cases at any given time for the foreseeable future, but perhaps not. The trend is favorable, anyway. We've reduced them, and we continue to do that. So, and I'm happy at the end of this to answer any other questions you have about what we do that I'm able to answer. With all of that in mind, and after what happened, what the vote was in December, I marinated on some of that a little bit, and then I put some suggestions in the letter that I sent to you. And my primary suggestion relates to the idea that I really don't think it's good for the county to have both of those pieces expiring with no auto-renewal at the same time. And the reason is, even if you choose to start going in-house with a new lawyer over that, say, two-year period, that the litigation piece will end, too. And you would be basically saying to this one new in-house person, welcome to your new job, and here's forty cases, four of which are massive type cases. I would suggest to you, that's probably very unfair to a new single lawyer coming into that job. That's a Herculean role to ask that person to take on. So that puts you all in the position of either being frankly unfair to a new person, or alternatively, you're hiring multiple people right off the bat. So in my view, and this is my suggestion, it makes much more sense to me to break those two pieces apart. So if there are those of you who want to consider, study, put a group together, whatever you want to do, to evaluate whether or not you want to have an in-house law office and when and how it would look, you will have a period of time to do that. But you will not be held hostage by the litigations in determining that. That was my suggestion in the letter. And to accomplish that, my first suggestion was, you should reduce the time period for my services county attorney, from two years to one year. So it's a little more than a year, it's because it actually renews mid-year, and we're partway in now, but so it'd be a year and three months, three or four months, I guess, before it expired. But that would give you all, those of you who are interested in doing this, a year and a little bit. Investigate it. Find out what it would take to have an in-house office if you want to go that route. I'm giving you, it creates space for you to do that. I suggested in my letter that you may seriously consider doing the litigation on a four-year term instead of two years. That is largely due to the fact that that gives you a transition period should you try to go in-house. It would allow the new person or persons, if there are any, to have some getting on the ground time before you begin taking on the litigations. There's no risk to the county, because the new agreement allows the county to place any new cases with whomever you wish. So you're not tied to anything. So those were two of the suggestions. The third suggestion was to go ahead and confront head-on this issue of what is the county attorney? Don't leave that a lingering issue. And I mentioned, I've addressed all three of the scenarios. I don't think going forward, using the term employee is the right language. And my example was, I realize, reading back through this, I wrote it as if I were saying it at the meeting, because I said if I fell down the stairs leaving this meeting, so I'll use that same example. If I fall down the stairs leaving this meeting, none of you expect me to file an OJI claim, I'm pretty sure, nor do I expect to. So in that sense, I'm really not treated like an employee, and I wouldn't act like an employee, I wouldn't file an OJI claim. If I get the flu tomorrow and I'm out for a month, hopefully it wouldn't be that long, but I wouldn't file an FMLA claim with Sonia Stevenson, and you wouldn't expect me to. So I don't think that's the right title. Official's not the right title either, in my opinion. There is no statute that requires an official called a county attorney. There is no, so that's really not a official role. Now, I think one can create it, but it's not a statutory role, it's not a required role, it's not like the trustee or county clerk. It's different than that. And so I think calling that role an official probably creates confusion, at least potentially. Given the confusion that's existed, I would suggest it to continue to create confusion about that title, which means if we're going to use a predetermined category that everybody's heard of and is comfortable with, you need to use independent contractor. That's the best way to define it, because that most nearly fits, I think, the way this works. So that was my other suggestion. I made all of those suggestions to the steering committee, they ultimately voted as they did. So it would be a one-year extension on the county attorney piece, which is also the general services piece, and four years on the litigation. There's no auto-renewal, there's no one-hundred-and-eighty-day termination clause. It'll just end in four years. Same thing on the county attorney. It'll just end on July or June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. And then it re-describes, it uses the word independent contractor in the agreement. So I know that was long, but that's very close to what I told the steering committee, although maybe not exact, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can answer.
Mr. Gurley.
Yes, if you'll allow me to sit so that I can read some of the stuff that I have. I'm inclined to vote yes on this tonight, but I do have some questions and some things I'd like to get clarified. C-TAS, you mentioned C-TAS. C-TAS is just that, an advisory body, am I correct on that? It carries no weight of law?
Agreed.
Okay. The rules governing you as an attorney are set forth by the Supreme Court. Agreed?
Yes, in part, yes.
I did some digging, and I have a question, and this gets back to, and I know that the steering committee voted for this, but to allow your firm to prepare this, and like I said in the beginning, I'm inclined to vote for this tonight, but I still would like to get some things clarified. I went on the BPR, which is the Board of Professional Responsibilities website. On there is a section on formal ethics opinion that are rulings by the Supreme Court of the state of Tennessee. And I found a bunch, but the oldest one I found goes back, and it's referenced in ones going forward, is eighty-one dash F dash four. And this is what they said, the Supreme Court said. An attorney may not represent, well, first of all, let me clarify that the firm is a private entity.
Yes.
Okay. An attorney may not represent both a governmental body and a private client merely because disclosure was made and they are agreeable that he represent both interests. Where public interest is involved, he may not represent conflicting interest, even with consent of all concern. The Supreme Court wishes to publicize its view of the responsibility of a member of the bar when he is attorney for of a member of the bar when he is attorney for a municipality or other public agency and also represents a private client whose interests come before or affected by it. In such circumstances, the Supreme Court considers that the attorney has the affirmative ethical responsibility immediately and fully disclose his conflict of interest to withdraw completely from representing both the municipality or agency and the private client with respect to such matter, and to recommend to the municipality or agency that it retain independent counsel. Where the public interest is involved, disclosure alone is not sufficient since the attorney may not represent conflicting interest even with the consent of all concern. And I found several opinions going forward in later years, but they come back and base it on, a lot of it's based on this. So I guess my question is, and I fully appreciate the fact that you did disclose the potential ethical conflict, the potential, but it would appear that disclosure alone is not sufficient. I'm just, I mean, I'm just bringing that up. I think that...
Well, can I comment on that?
Yes.
All right. If that is your concern, then, as I said before, the county can vote to have somebody review the agreement. I mean, I can't make you vote to have somebody review the agreement, so I don't know what else would I do at that point.
I'm just bringing that forth.
Well, I understand, but unless you've got a remedy, I don't know how we resolve that.
To me, it just says that even though you and the steering committee agree, that's not something that can be. I don't know that another attorney would draw the agreement up any differently than what you did. Like I said, you know, we've got to look at some of the matters, I think, and this does give us time to look at this. This gives us a period of time. And I fully understand the need for continuation in the situation of litigation. Sometimes litigation is prolonged, but I just think there's some things that have gone on, and a lot of it, to be honest, has nothing to do with Josh McQuarrie. It evolved well before you, and I don't see it continuing. But another thing that, you know, I know that it's been taken out of this one, but it would appear that the current language in the private, in the agreement regarding approval and consent by the firm prior to us hiring another lawyer is probably, seems to not be enforceable because Section 2 of the Private Act says, "Rutherford County may enter such additional written agreements with private attorneys and law firms for the provision of additional legal services as the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners may deem appropriate." And I don't know that a contract can usurp code.
Want me to comment on that?
Yes.
All right. That's not in the contract, the amendment. So what you're talking about is not, has been taken out. And second, I'm not aware, and maybe you can enlighten me, I'm not aware of a single time that anyone at my office interfered with the ability of the county to hire an outside guy.
I'm not beginning to make that kind of accusation. As I said, I think a lot of this goes back well before you. It was in there, but it would seem to be a mute issue. That being said, I think we have a lot to look at. I'm not opposed to contract legal services. It may very well be the best way to go. I think there's things that we need to define, and I think we, as a body, the commission, probably has to do a better job of defining that. So I put as much on us as I do anyone, maybe more so, because we're the ones that ultimately are responsible. That being said, I will probably...
Thank you for those questions.
Any other question or discussion from Mr. Dodd and Mr. P?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. McQuarrie opened your comments acknowledging that perhaps we could have put all of our, a lot of this in one bucket, presented it to one group. And I personally have some regret that we didn't do that. And your efforts since the December meeting are commendable. You've been very articulate and very persuasive in educating me, and I apologize to this body for perhaps not availing myself of the abundance of information we have, but frankly, it's a lot of information in different places. So I am in full support of this resolution tonight and look forward to being engaged as we go forward to make a good decision for us in the future. So thanks for your efforts and the intervening time.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. P.
Well, I'm also in favor of us voting this agreement up. A quick question, Josh.
Yes, sir.
And what you've done by going to the state and asking the appropriate people, you know, whether what we were doing is legal. Now, to address Commissioner Gurley's question there about that ruling, do you think that we need to have an attorney do that? Because we specifically asked them out of steering to prepare it for us. For one thing, it didn't cost us anything. Two, if we didn't like what was in there, which some of the things we didn't, we changed, you know, on the spot. So personally, I feel like we wrote that agreement because we changed it the way we wanted it changed and voted on it. So I mean, how do you answer that, Josh?
I mean, look, if you start with the premise that everything I would say about the agreement is inherently conflicted, then I probably can't give you advice on whether you should have somebody look at the agreement either. So I don't know how to answer the question. I don't know a better way. I agree with Mr. Gurley. He's right. CTAAS is not binding authority. We all know that. It is advisory information based on data and information from around the state, but they are invested in this kind of discourse across the state, and they generally are informed. So other than that resource, I don't know a better resource for that kind of question. And that's why I use that resource. If someone has an idea of a better resource, perhaps they should be consulted.
Well, I'll just restate my opinion. Yes, you wrote the initial agreement that was there, or your firm did. However, you know, it was picked over pretty good, and this is what, the second time we brought it here. So, you know, I'm in favor of going ahead and passing this now. I personally wanted a longer agreement on the attorney's side, but that's not the way the vote went down. And that's not, you know, this is an agreement that his firm has also agreed to. You know, just because we say, yeah, we like this, doesn't mean that they're going to say, yes, we like this too, and we're in an agreement. You know, this is the agreement that his firm has offered us right now too, and we've decided out of steering to take it. So it's up to us to decide from there.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I call for the question.
Second, we have a call for the question. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That looks like a majority, unanimous. All right, we've called for the questions. So we're ready to vote, so let's do this by roll call vote. Please cast your votes. Did you make, you made the motion, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gooch did before we, Mr. McQuarrie made his comments.
About 30 minutes ago, but yeah.
There you go. Everyone is now voted.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please cast, record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, there is a resolution to pursue litigation to recover Rutherford County's funds expended on the opioid crisis. Whereas the widespread distribution of pharmaceutical opioids within and around Rutherford County, Tennessee, has become a major public health problem, and whereas the taxpayers of Rutherford County, Tennessee, have incurred substantial expenses to combat the negative effects from widespread opioid distribution and abuse. Whereas other communities in middle Tennessee and around the United States have initiated litigation against opioid pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors to seek damages for costs incurred in combating the issues stemming from widespread distribution and use of opioids. Whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee, has previously engaged a law firm of Leaf, Casper, Hyman, and Bernstein to investigate potential litigation to recover funds for Rutherford County, Tennessee, at no cost to Rutherford County. And whereas Leaf, is it Cabriser, Hyman, and Bernstein have undertaken an investigation and has concluded that Rutherford County has expended significant amounts of money and resources to combat the effects of the opioid catastrophe in Rutherford County, incurring costs that could range into the millions of dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County, Tennessee, retain Leaf, Cabriser, Hyman, and Bernstein to be its attorneys at no out-of-pocket cost to Rutherford County, and with fees and costs to be recovered only from the recovery by the county and/or from defendants directly in order to pursue litigation to recover funds for Rutherford County expended and as a result of the widespread marketing and distribution of opioids into Rutherford County, and well as other relief available, including abatement against any responsible party, including pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors, and that the county mayor be and hereby authorized to execute documents to effectuate the purposes of this resolution, including an appropriate attorney representation agreement and complaint. Resolve this the 15th day of February 2018. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Nipper. Second, Mr. Gooch, we loaded late this afternoon a little bit more to that last sentence, and let me read that. It's on your iPad, I believe, hopefully. But number two there on that last paragraph says that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute documents to effectuate the purposes of this resolution, including an appropriate attorney representation agreement and complaint with fees and cost recovered by the law firm not to exceed 28% of the recovery by the county. So like that to be a part of the record is what the actual resolution says. And with that reading, do we still have the same second on that, Mr. Nipper? All right. Now, a time for a discussion. I will say, I don't think you have this email that I received from Mr. Mark Chalice of this firm, but there was a meeting, and at that meeting was Captain Chris Fly from the Sheriff's Office, Dr. Rudd, who is our medical provider for the Adult Attention Center, Mr. Trey King, Probation and Recovery Service, and Mr. Mike Nunnely, Emergency Medical Services, and Ms. Lisa Nolan, our Finance Director. And through that discussion we had, their basic statement is, based on our investigation, we preliminarily conclude that Rutherford County has incurred significant damages, potentially over a million, potentially in the multiple millions of dollars as a result of the national opioid epidemic. So that's where we are. They've had this little review and this little study time with us here, and they have opined, you might say, that there are potentially millions of dollars available through this process. So now your question's in your discussion. Mr. Schaefer?
This is just for information, but I went to the last Laverne, Maran, Alderman meeting, same guy was there, and did the same presentation with them in an executive session, and they approved the same thing that we did the last time. So I mean, and the, so you know, Laverne's budget's much lower than what ours is, and they are definitely looking at it. So just throw it, it's worth.
All right. Any other discussion? Well, there being none, I think you must be ready to vote, so we're going to roll call vote on this one as well. So please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I can honestly say that none of the scouts in the balcony fell asleep during my four presentations, so I appreciate that.
All right. Is there any other business or any other announcements? Mr. P.
Okay, this Saturday, February 17, between 6:00 and 10:00, there'll be a country ham breakfast at a Ketchel Volunteer Fire Department, and would like to invite all of y'all to come out and visit. And also, I wanted to mention that the Public Safety Meeting this month will be, Monday, the 26th, at 5:30, will also be held out at the Ketchel Fire Department. There are a lot of good things happening out there, and just want to invite y'all down to see some of that. You'd like to come a little early on that meeting night. You know, they'd be happy to show you around, let you know what's going on.
Mr. Schaefer?
We're anticipating on the 26th, either have a country ham breakfast or we'll settle for pancakes that night.
Anyone else have any? Mr. Reed?
Well, located on the Southern Compass Point of Rutherford County is located, an outstanding volunteer fire department also, known as the Fosterville Midland Fire Department. And also this Saturday, between 7:00 and 11:00, they're having a pancake breakfast. And something this fire department has accomplished over the last few weeks is they have lowered their ISO rating from nine to five, which will be coming up in May, which is something to be very proud of.
[applause]
So when you get through with ham, come out there and get you some pancakes, and then we'll have plenty of water to wash it down too, because we do have an outstanding fire department, and we're very proud of, and we'd like for you to come out there and tell them so.
Thank you. That's great news, certainly. Mr. Chonto?
Yes, sir. The domestic violence program of Rutherford County would like to extend the invitation to the, for breakfast tomorrow morning, 8:30, at the Central Christian Church on the corner of Menny and East Men. 8:30 tomorrow. Didn't see the cost or anything. I think would be, maybe, we don't have to pay, but they really want, you know, at least several of us to join. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serino. Appreciate that. Is there any other business that you wish to bring forward? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.